AFLCIO, which is our Federation of Our State's Union. And tonight, I am chairing this hearing of the Department of People Who Work for a Living. You got folks here who work for a living?
Yeah!
I want to thank the mighty Union of Southern Service Workers for hosting us tonight. Please give it up for them. And I want to thank all of you for being here. It's awesome to have a standing-room-only crowd. And I appreciate all of you coming out and for making your voices heard tonight. Now more than ever, working people need to stand up and speak up. Because every day, unelected billionaire Elon Musk and his fake government department Doge are attacking federal workers and gutting vital government services we all rely on, like public safety, public education, Social Security, veterans' benefits, and Medicaid. And to make it even worse, Musk is making these cuts and promoting government privatization all so that billionaires like him can make more money and pay even less in taxes. All the while, that's right, boom! All the while, working folks like you and me get left behind. These first 100 days have seemed like 1,000 years, y'all.
That's right.
There have been so many attacks on our government, and all these whiplash changes in policy can be confusing and overwhelming, which is exactly what the billionaires and the bosses want. They want to divide us, to distract us, and to discourage us from standing up and standing together. They want us to believe that nothing we do will make a difference, that there's no way that we can change things. Well, we know better. We know the power of our solidarity. The billionaires and the bosses, they have a strategy of divide and conquer. But we working folks, we have a strategy too. It's called unite and triumph. Which is why the AFLCIO launched the Department of People Who Work for a Living to bring working people together to stand up and fight back against this billionaire takeover of our government. Because after all, if a billionaire like Elon Musk can have his own fake government department, we working folks can have one too. So that our views, our lived experience, becomes part of the public discourse. All across the country, the Department of People Who Work for a Living is convening hearings like these to demand that elected officials, like Senator Tom Tillis, put the interests of working people first. But y'all may have noticed that Senator Tillis doesn't want to hear from us. He doesn't hold town halls, and he did not accept our invitation to be here this evening. Senator Tillis... Nice, nice chicken plump in there. Senator Tillis and others in Congress want to tune us out. They want to ignore our anger and our anxiety as we face layoffs, service cuts, rising prices, and a tanking economy. Tonight, we make it clear that working people will not be ignored, and we will not be silent. Working people are the true experts in our society. We make the economy run. We know what's good for our neighbors and our communities. And that's steady jobs, living wages, safe working conditions, and a strong safety net. The government needs to hear from us just as much as it hears from Elon Musk. So tonight, we have six local folks who are going to testify before a panel of community leaders about the impacts that Musk and Doge are having on their lives and on our Triangle community. While we don't have an open mic for everyone to speak tonight, we know that everyone has a story. So I hope that before we started, you took an opportunity to address a postcard to Senator Tillis with a question. We're going to read some of those later this evening. I hope you made some signs. And most of all, I hope you had an opportunity to tell your video story with our videographer. If you did not, there'll be an opportunity at the end of the evening to do so. And then we have flyers at the table in the back of the QR code that you can scan to tell your story when you go home. The Department of People Who Work for a Living is going to compile all the testimony and stories from around the nation into a report for Senator Tillis and our elected officials in Washington. So please, share your stories. We need to continue to speak up and stand up because together we can make a difference. After all, there are a whole lot more of us, letter carriers, fast-food servers, bus drivers, and working folks than there are billionaires. Our power grows exponentially with our numbers. So as more of us stand up, our voices will grow louder and louder, and we will win justice for federal workers and for all of us. So if you're committed to making your voice heard and fighting back against this billionaire takeover, when I say "together we win," you say "count me in." Together we win!
Count me in!
Together we win!
Count me in!
Together we win!
Count me in!
Awesome. Let's get started with tonight's program. Tonight, we have community leaders who are going to listen to the testimony and respond at the end. Our panelists tonight, starting closest to me. Ayesha Francis, a long-term care provider and a member of the Union of Southern Service Workers. Terrence Duhbury, a member of the Amalgamated Transit Union, Local 1328, Involved in the Triangle Labor Council. Then we have Charles Clark, who is the Southern Region Director for the National AFLCIO. The Reverend Dr. Jennifer Copeland, Executive Director of the North Carolina Council of Churches. And Alexandra Orger Serrada, who is the Director of the North Carolina Budget and Tax Center. And then we have our cardboard stand-in for no-show Senator Tom Tillis. We had also hoped to have Representative Zach Hawkins from Durham, but the legislature went into session in the House at 4:00 PM with a slew of bills, so he's unable to make it. So I want to thank all of our panelists for their participation tonight and for their leadership every day here in the Durham community. As I said, we have six people lined up who will provide testimony about the impacts of these cuts to government services. And after they give their testimony, the leaders on this panel will reflect on how they will each amplify and lift up what they heard tonight. And then at the end, we will talk about next steps and how we keep up pressure on Senator Tillis and make sure that he puts the interests of working people first. So with that, I will introduce our first person to testify, and that is Libby Manley. She is a nurse at the VA Hospital here in Durham and a member of National Nurses United. Please give it up for Libby.
Hi, everyone. My name is Libby Manley, and I'm a nurse at the VA. I'm a single... A single mom of two girls, and I've lived in Durham for almost 30 years. Do we have any veterans in the room? Any family members of veterans? Thank you so much for your service. Thank you so much. So I'm a proud member of National Nurses United and a now a proud member of the Department of People Who Work for a Living. I have worked at the VA since 2016, mostly in the emergency department. But for the past four years, I've been a vascular access nurse. That means I'm the one they call if a patient has difficult veins. So I'm the one that comes and helps with that.
Speak a little louder.
Sure. I really love my job, and our veterans truly love the VA. They feel at home there. The VA is the largest healthcare system in the country, serving 9 million veterans, and we do so on a public basis. We stand apart from privatized and for-profit healthcare industry. An eligible veteran is not handed a bill after they get care. There is no profit within the VA system. We seek to provide the best care to our veterans because we, as a society, have decided that that's the right thing to do. And there's a great deal of public good that comes from our work. The nonprofit medical research that the VA engages in is groundbreaking, whether that be advances in prosthetic limbs or research into PTSD and depression. Did you know that the VA developed the first cardiac pacemaker? The shingles vaccine? The first treatments for tuberculosis? The nicotine patch? The VA benefits us all.
CT scans.
Yes, CT scans. Thank you. Veterans prefer the healthcare that they get at the VA over corporate care. We provide better outcomes for our veterans for less money. But billionaires and their political allies only see the hundreds of billions of dollars in profit that they could make off the backs of our veteran patients by privatizing the VA. That's what they want to do. If they could bring our 9 million veterans into the private sector, they would make a lot of money. And that's why these cuts are happening. They want to destroy the VA. They want to make it so dysfunctional and difficult to receive care that a crisis in care is created. So let that sink in. Our opponents, driven by greed and corruption, want to break the VA so that they can take it away from you, from me, and from our veteran patients. So just so they can make a buck. So let that sink in. So what does that look like right now on the ground in our hospitals, our VA hospitals across the country? We see nurses passing out meal trays and stocking supply rooms. We're supposed to be taking care of patients at the bedside. We see patient waiting rooms being turned into cubicle farms for previously remote staff. Why? Why are we doing this? We see medical providers conducting telehealth visits with veterans from broom closets and broken elevators. I'm not kidding, y'all. It's so... They're trying to get privacy to talk to their veteran patients, and that's what they have offered to them. We see a mass exodus in specialty doctors, forcing the shuttering of a department that is critical in diagnosing cancer, organ failure, and other diseases. The loss of so many primary care providers that the most vulnerable and sick veterans can no longer enroll in home-based primary care. Shame.
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 And they still want to cut 83,000 more VA jobs. No. Just a few hours ago, a group of nurses, including colleagues of mine, visited Senator Tom Tillis's office in Washington, DC. The senator refused to meet with us. We nurses, we are the most trusted profession for 23 years running, and he wouldn't sit down with us and listen to us and our concerns about veteran care. I am a nurse, but I am also a union nurse. And that means that me and my coworkers will be on the front lines fighting back against these attacks to veteran care. That means that we've made a commitment to each other and to our communities to have each other's backs. I stand with all of my coworkers in the federal government who are fighting back as well. Because these fights are connected, I ask all of you to also stand with us because these attacks are ultimately going to impact us all. My question for Senator Tillis, were you born with no swine? Or is this a trunk-related medical condition?
Thank you, Libby, for your testimony. Thank you for the care that you provide for our veterans. North Carolina has the fourth-highest population of veterans in the country, and they are all going to suffer greatly with these cuts.
In the highest-growing population of veterans in the country.
Yeah.
Specifically in Durham.
And it's unconscionable that we are cutting services for our veterans when they've sacrificed so much for our country. Please give another round of applause for that. Our next person to testify is Wayne Bostick. He is President of the North Carolina A. Philip Randolph Institute. Give it up for Wayne.
Hello, everyone. Hope this thing will come up some... I'm a little taller than she is.
A little bit.
I am here to stand before you to address a crisis that is tearing at the fabric of our society. Food insecurity in North Carolina. This issue, which affects millions across this nation, demands our immediate attention and action. In North Carolina alone, over 1.4 million residents do not have reliable access to adequate food. This alarming figure includes one in five children who are unsure whether they will see their next meal or where to come from. Statistics paint a stark picture. In 2022, around 450 households in North Carolina experienced food insecurity. Many of these families are hard-working individuals who, despite their efforts, cannot make ends meet due to the rising cost of living and stagnant wages. According to Feeding America, North Carolina ranks 10th in the nation for food insecurity, a position that no state should hold, especially one renowned for its agricultural growth. But beyond the numbers lie personal stories that bring the gravity of this issue to light. Take, for instance, Shontay, a mother who moved her family here to Raleigh, North Carolina, from Newport News, Virginia. Shontay struggles to put food on the table for her four children while looking for suitable employment. She depends on the aid of extended family members and the local food patches like I run to get food assistance. And her story is not unique. Each day, countless families face the heartbreaking reality of having to choose between paying rent and buying groceries. Or consider Clint, a veteran who served our country with honor. After returning home, Clint found himself battling not just the scars of war, but also the persistent pains of hunger. It is a travesty that someone who defended our freedoms must now fight for basic sustenance. These stories reflect the urgent need for comprehensive policies that address hunger and support for local food banks. Organizations like the Food Bank of Central and Eastern North Carolina are doing incredible work. But they cannot do it alone. They need support from the government to maintain their reach and the resources. Therefore, I urge you, well, you, Senator Tillis, if you were here, and all the representatives, to prioritize maintaining policies that combat food insecurity. This means making sure that funding for Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, continues so... continues so it keeps initiatives that promote local agriculture and ensures that food banks have the necessary resources to serve our communities effectively. Just a side note, I just learned today I was going to do a food drive at the end of May. I just learned today that the food bank is going to be closed that week of May. That's never happened. Never. So that's just a side note. Let's know what's going on with that. Therefore, I urge you and all the U.S. Representatives... I'm sorry. Let us not forget that food insecurity is not just a matter of hunger. It is a matter of health, education, and economic stability. Children who lack proper nutrition are more likely to fall behind in school, while adults facing hunger are less productive and more susceptible to chronic illnesses. By addressing food insecurity, we invest in a healthier, more prosperous future for all. In conclusion, I call upon Senator Tillis and all of our leaders to take decisive action to don't allow extreme views to tear down what North Carolina has proudly built. Let us work together to ensure that no North Carolinian goes to bed hungry. You have a responsibility to your constituents to maintain policies that address food insecurity by funding local food banks and fostering a society where everyone has the dignity of knowing they can count on their next meal. If Senator Tillis was here, I would ask him, would you want to see your beautiful state of North Carolina to start looking like an impoverished Third World country?
Thank you, Wayne, for your testimony. Thank you for your leadership at North Carolina A. Philip Randolph Institute. They do run a food bank. I'm sure that Wayne will be happy to receive donations to continue that food bank, so you can definitely see him at the end. We know with these layoffs, rising prices, more and more people are going to need food assistance, and there's less out there, which is a crying shame in this country. So thank you, Wayne. Next, we will hear from Julie Holcomb, a Navy veteran and former researcher at the VA. Give it up for Julie.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. So my name is Julie Holcomb. Just a little bit about me, I graduated from Jordan High School here in Durham. After graduation, I actually joined the Navy and served faithfully for 20 years. During my... Thank you. So during my final two years of active duty, I earned my master's degree in psychology and landed a research coordinator position at an unnamed VA medical center. For the past five years, I've been running a randomized control trial to evaluate the effectiveness of a novel medication in combination with psychotherapy for the treatment of veterans with PTSD. Okay? But soon after the current administration came into office, telework was completely rescinded, and full-time return-to-office orders were issued with very few exceptions. Those providing care virtually were forced back into the office, some traveling hours a day to provide the exact same level of care from an office computer if one could be found. Those unable to return full-time due to distance or other personal reasons were forced to resign regardless of the scope of their positions or number of veterans in their caseload. In addition to the return-to-office policy, the current administration has implemented a hiring freeze of all non-essential positions. Out of those dozens of occupations listed as essential at the VA, not a single one covers research lab personnel. Not a single one. As a result, principal investigators cannot hire clinicians, research coordinators, or research assistants to replace already existing vacancies or fill positions of those unable to return to the office full-time. Existing hiring packages for all inbound personnel, paid or unpaid, have already been terminated. The most consequential position affecting this was research coordinator. That's my job. The study cannot run without a research coordinator. It's the glue that holds the study together. To prove this point, I'll read an excerpt from my most recent performance evaluation given to me on January 6th. It was an outstanding performance evaluation. Thanks. Due to the budget constraints and staff shortages, yes, we worked entirely too hard for what we didn't have already. Ms. Holcomb is the only person handling all recruitment, screening calls, appointment scheduling, reminders, clinical assessments, measure collection, participant compensation, database management, data entry, IRV correspondence, research audits, project budgeting, hiring, and staff onboarding. This study absolutely could not run without her. Nevertheless, I was forced to resign from my position on April 18th. The full-time return-to-office mandate was not feasible for me based on the distance from my residence. I was not permitted by this administration to reduce my hours or request a without-compensation research appointment, which means working for free... Virtually working for free, I was not allowed because my position as a research coordinator was and still is frozen for all and any HR movement. As a result, my research data for 98 veterans with PTSD, spanning 204 assessments, 816 therapy sessions, and 748 medical evaluations, all costing millions of dollars to collect, will not be entered, analyzed, or published. Five full years of my blood, sweat, and tears gone. This is the epitome of waste. And these policies didn't just affect me or my lab. They are crippling research labs in every single VA across the country, every single one. In addition to PTSD studies that are being halted or crippled, some including depression, suicide, substance use, cancers, insomnia, cardiovascular diseases, chronic pain, couples therapy, and diabetes. These are the ones I personally know about. And I work with the people in these labs doing this research. I personally know these. Okay? Without the ability to hire coordinators or other critical lab personnel, already stretched-thin studies are dying on the vine for our veterans. At the end of the day, you cannot in good conscience shake a veteran's hand and bake them for their service while simultaneously pulling the plug on critical research and medical care they deserve as a consequence of said service. This is exactly what is happening today, right as we speak. And everybody needs to know it. Everybody needs to know it. Thank you for your time.
I do have a question for Mr. Tillis. It's not as saucy, but Senator Tillis, do you support medical research for veterans? And if so, what do you plan to do to protect it?
Thank you, Julie. Thank you for your service to our country. Thank you for all the work that you do. North Carolina has over 17,000 people employed through the VA. And with these cuts, it's not only our veterans who are going to suffer, laid-off workers and their families are suffering, our economy is suffering, and Senator Tillis is doing nothing. So thank you again, Julie. Next, we are going to hear from Tanya Freeman, who is a longtime postal worker and president of the Raleigh ABWU Local.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I've worked with the United States Postal Service for 30 years in June. Postal Service provided a decent living wage, good benefits, including affordable health and dental insurance. Because of the Postal Service, we have lived comfortably. Postal Service allowed us to raise our family and pay for good education to our kids. Today, I am saddened to see the state of the Postal Service. The former Postmaster General laid the groundwork for privatization. Elon Musk and Doge are finishing the job. But the post office doesn't belong to the billionaires. It belongs to all the people who live in this country. It belongs to all of us. Its existence is mandated by the Constitution itself, and Congress must act to protect it. Elon Musk and Doge are actively assaulting the public service while making way for privatization. This hurts the customers, the very ones who use the Postal Service. You can already see the mail delays made on purpose and the fast rise in prices of stamps and services. Not only have my neighbors, friends, and customers in line complained to me about this, but my family and I have seen it firsthand. My mother has received late fees from her bill payments not arriving on time. Packages she was expecting were lost, and when finally found, they arrived eight days later from their expected delivery date. The Christmas card I mailed to my mother, postmarked December 10th, 2024, was delivered January 7th, 2025. My mother lives in Dillon, South Carolina. My husband receives medicine by mail. This medicine must be kept cold. It arrives in a styrofoam package with dry ice to preserve it. One month, when the package finally arrived, after my husband was due to take his medicine, the ice was melted and the medicine was spoiled. Once my informed delivery showed I was to receive a certified letter from my mortgage company, I had no clue what it was for. It was lost in the mail. The tracking showed it was in another state. When I finally received it and read the letter from my mortgage company, I saw a discrepancy that would have been very costly to me and my family if I missed the deadline to get it corrected. It arrived on a Friday afternoon. The deadline for me to correct the discrepancy was Monday. The mortgage company is closed on the weekends. It took most of the day that Monday, but I got it corrected just two hours before the deadline. Those are just my examples. This is happening all over the country. You may have been affected or know someone that has been affected by these delays. This is unacceptable. Making matters worse, not content with just destroying my job of 30 years, Musk and Doge are attempting to destroy our social security program. I've worked all my life. I paid into it. We all have. It's our money, not the billionaires' money. My mother is a senior citizen collecting a meager social security check. Well, it's electronic. Thank goodness it can't get lost in the mail. But with all the cuts to the Social Security Administration staffing and services that Musk and Doge are implementing, some seniors may not get their deposits. Even one month without social security would be detrimental to most, and I know it would be to my mother. Our representatives in Congress must act to protect us, especially our U.S. senators, whose job it is to represent everyone in North Carolina. We need Senator Tillis to show up, to listen, and to act to protect our public services, the workers who provide them, and the abilities. How can you expect anyone to show up for you when you're up for reelection next year if he won't show up for us now?
Thank you, Tanya, for your long service with the Postal Service. There are over 11,000 workers employed by the Postal Service in North Carolina, many of them with decades of service, like Tanya. They are going to suffer greatly if we go to privatization and we cut services, and we know, especially our rural communities, where folks who are relying on the Postal Service for medication and other things are really going to suffer. So, thank you for your testimony, Tanya. Next, we will hear from Holly Wilson, who is president of the American Federation of Government Employees Local that represents workers at the Environmental Protection Agency. Please give it up for Holly.
Good evening. My name is Holly Wilson. I'm the president of the American Federation of Government Employees Local 3347 at EPA in Research Triangle Park. I represent about 1,000 career staff at the park. I've been with EPA for, gosh, a little bit over 27 years now. I worked at the county and the state, and I actually got recruited. So, I was living in Chicago, and they called because I had worked with the EPA as a state grantee, and they're like, would you be interested in coming and doing some of the same work you were doing as a grantee? And I said, is it warm, ready in Chicago? They said, yes. And I'm like, I am on my way. So, I started my career designing and delivering training for states and local air quality agencies, helping them implement their air quality programs. Over time, my focus shift to grants and contracts and then into public outreach and public engagement to ensure that everyday folks understood how our government worked and actually were able to participate in our rulemaking. So, my job really was just to bridge the gap between government decisions and the impacts of communities that they were going to feel. Our campus at EPA sits on a beautiful 10 acres. We're right across the pond from NIESH. And that EPA campus is just not a federal workplace or just a building. We are a global leader in environmental research. It houses 15 program offices and more than 2,000 public servants, including scientists, engineers, health professionals. Many of them like me have dedicated decades of their lives to this work. I'm here tonight because we are facing an unprecedented threat. The proposed elimination of EPA's Office of Research and Development and severe staffing cuts and resource cuts across the agency would not just disrupt our work, it would affect EPA's ability to protect human health and the environment. ORD is the scientific heart. It's the core of the work that we do at EPA. Its research drives our decisions whether we're ensuring safety, the safety of drinking water, or assessing wildlife smoke impacts, or safeguarding communities after a hurricane. So, we send our little water monitor truck all through to make sure that after a storm that the water is safe to drink. When science is removed from decision-making, what replaces it is politics and profit. Morality at EPA is really, really low. It's at an all-time low. The constant threats of budget cuts, resource cuts, program cuts are having a destructive and stressful impact on staff there. I have colleagues who have spent their life serving in public service. We are overwhelmed, we are frustrated, we are angry, we are grieving. I've seen tears in the hallway. We have staff that are afraid to plan for their futures. Other staff feel betrayed by the government that they were committed, that they've committed their lives to serving. All of this is happening while we continue to show up every day, day after day, trying to protect the public in spite of it all. These just aren't jobs. For many of us, their dream drops. We believe in the mission. We feel the weight of the work on health and safety of millions of Americans. But we are exhausted. I take pride, we all take pride in saying that these are not plug-and-play jobs. They're not next man-up jobs. The level of expertise we hold takes years, sometimes decades, to build. Once that expertise is lost, it doesn't come back quickly. You don't walk in the door with relationships with industry and communities. You don't walk in the door knowing how to conduct the research that we do. You don't walk in the door knowing how to do regulation. That is earned. The slash-burn approach, the idea that you can dismantle, desmoralize, and somehow expect improved outcomes simply does not work. In fact, it costs taxpayers through rush firings, expensive rehiring, and then the loss of institutional knowledge. Unions like mine are doing what we can to offer emotional and resource support. We're fighting for transparency with the agency, but make no mistake, this is the most challenging moment and federal workforce has seen in decades, and it's certainly in my 27 years. And the truth is, it's just not federal workers who will pay the price. If EPA is dismantled, America will suffer. The American public will suffer. Our drinking water will be less safe, our air will be more polluted, and our children more vulnerable to toxic chemicals. Finally, science is not and should not be a partisan issue. Science-based decision-making ensures consistency, stability, and public trust regardless of who's in the office and the Oval Office. So, Senator Tillis, I leave you with these questions. When your family's safety is on the line, ask yourself, do you want a career federal scientist committed to following the science? Or do you want someone whose decisions are influenced by politics and the highest bidder? Thank you.
Thank you, Holly, for your work as a scientist. Thank you for all that you're doing to fight for the workers of the United States. It really is a crying shame that Senator Tillis is not here to hear how government workers put their heart and souls into what they do and how unnecessary this pain and suffering and anxiety is that we are creating for all of our government workers. So, again, thank you so much, Holly, for everything. Our final person to testify is Mario Vargas. He is the Secretary Treasurer of the Farm Labor Organizing Committee, which represents farmworkers in our state. Please give a hand, Mario.
Can everybody hear you? Good evening, everybody. I get a little nervous when I do the speeches, but I get better. Thank you. So, I just want to start off with, can anybody guess what I'm going to talk about?
Farming.
Yes, I'm a Latino, I'm a Mexican-American. I was a migrant worker for almost 15 years. My family and I, we picked crops all in the eastern United States. We started in Homestead, Florida, and picking tomatoes, pickles, and we would go just, you know, word of mouth, just picking the next crop and next crop until we get to Michigan. Once we were in Michigan, the last crop would be apples. By that time, it was around November, and it was cold as hell in those camps that we used to live. I can remember the icicles building in the roof. That's how cold it was. And so, for me, what I do, and I work for FLOC, Farm Labor Organizing Committee, for those who do not know, FLOC. And we represent migrant workers. There's two types of members. One is through the bargaining agreement, and there's ASWAT workers that come and pick our tomatoes, you know, and every other crop. And then we have associate members, that they're the ones that are in the community, Latino communities, and they become associate members. $30 and you're a member. So, anybody in here can become a member. Saying that, I'm just, you know, when I do my work, it comes from my heart. And thank you, Jeremy, thank you, President, to inviting me here because I do, when I do my work, it just comes from my heart. It makes me sad of everything that's happening, everything that's happening, not only to the American working families, people, but especially to my people. These mass deportations, are you kidding me? You know, do they not think about the small North Carolina growers? Let's not talk about the whole, you know, United States here in North Carolina. Let's talk about the small North Carolina growers that are barely making it. They come out even at the end of the season because them themselves have a lot of law wars and payments that they have to do. What happens to a tomato if they do this mass deportations? You're going to be paying $5 for a tomato, you know, a pint of strawberries that they're in season right now. What's going to happen to that? Do they really think that by these mass deportations, that's what's going to face our economy? Of course not. It's going to take to the ground. So, with this, I say, you know, let's stop. We can't listen to these billionaires, or should I say, who is advising these billionaires that this is a good idea of having mass deportations? They're the ones that should be getting fired instead of all these government workers, instead of all these, you know, everybody, you know, working for us. And I can't even find a word for it because it's just, it's stupid, it's ignorant, it's just everything. And, oh, and I have to say, I do wear a lot of hats, just like every other coworker that works for FLOC. We wear a lot of hats. Me, myself, I'm an organizer, I'm a coordinator, Secretary Treasurer, and recently, I'm a new Christian. I dedicate my life to Christ, that's why I'm not saying any bad words. Because I want to say a lot of bad words, and I'm holding them in. Thank you, thank you for understanding. I do. Just because I want to share a story that probably deeteers. And every single one of our, my coworkers, the organizers, they have thousands of stories that we can share. And I'll share one really quick. I know we don't have a lot of time, but good thing I'm the last one. So, there's this member that we had a meeting, and it was an education meeting so that they can know how to defend themselves and their rights, you know, if ICE comes in at work and whatnot. So, she pulls me off to the side at the end of the meeting, and she told me, she asked me, she said, you know, Mario, what am I going to do if they deport me? And you know my family, Mario, I have an eight-year-old with autism. And anybody that knows autism knows that there's different levels of autism, and his is really bad. He's dependent on his mother. And me, myself, I have a five-year-old that has autism. And it's hard. Just to think that they're going to divide that family if it comes to that. Do they not think about that? Do they not have a heart?
Nope.
Do they? You know, what's wrong with them? That's inhumane. If they're going to divide these kind of families. So, I just told her what, you know, because I thought about it, and I said, you know, I'm lucky that I was born in Hardeston, Texas, and so I don't have to go through that. But I did feel my heart broke down for her, and I just told her, I said, well, I'll take care of her. Every single one of us have to help each other. That's why we're here, you know, that's why we're here. We have to collaborate, we have to unite, we have to be humans, you know, instead of some of these billionaires that they don't care about us. They don't care about the kids, they don't care about families, they're just, they just care about making money, and that's it. That's it. So, thank you so much, you home preserver, Mario Vargas.
Two.
To Senator Tom Tillis. What or how could you help ease the fear in many Latinos that help the economy here in the North Carolinas?
Thank you, Mario, for that testimony, and thank you for your advocacy for farmworkers. You know, it is so imperative that all of us stand in solidarity with our immigrant brothers and sisters and families as they face this threat of unjust and illegal deportation. Thank you again, Mario. And I just want to say again, a thank you to all the folks that testified. I know it's not easy to get up here and tell these stories, especially, you know, when you're feeling all the anxiety that's coming from your own personal situation and those that you care about. So, another round of applause for all of the folks that testified. In a minute, we are going to hear responses from our panel of community leaders, but I wanted to take an opportunity to read a few of the questions that you wrote down on postcards that we are going to send to Senator Tillis. Food safety and public health are important for everyone, regardless of party or ideology. What are you going to do to stop government cuts to food safety inspectors and the regulations that keep the public healthy? How will you fight for our families who are tirelessly providing essential labor and low-wage jobs like fast food, and we still only earn poverty wages? How will you fight for us? How will you help your constituents support their children? How are you going to ensure our Fifth Amendment right to due process? How are you going to ensure our Fifth Amendment right to due process? Senator Tillis, will you fight to protect Social Security, or will you privatize it? How many of you wish Senator Tillis were here to answer those questions? I really wish he had been here to hear the testimony and the stories, because congressional leaders like him are completely out of touch with their constituents back home. They need to understand that working people, we don't want ideological grandstanding. We don't want elected officials who use public policy to settle personal grudges. That's not going to put food on the table, pay the rent, protect our retirement. You heard from all the folks who told their stories, how their families, our citizens, our communities, our economy, we all suffer when essential government services are decimated. So I want to give our panelists a couple minutes to respond, to let us know how you're going to take what you've heard tonight and amplify the voices of the working people here. And I will start with you, Ayesha.
Hello, hello, hello. I'm Ayesha, I'm Ayesha Francis. I live and work in Durham as a healthcare worker. I'm a proud member of USSW. I became part of what was then NC Raise Up, which has since evolved into the Union of Southern Service Workers back in 2020, at the height of the pandemic, of the COVID pandemic. Myself and my coworkers, we led a strike at Freddy's Frozen Food and Custard three times. Those three times ended us up with three results, which lets us know that there is definitely power in numbers. And just to amplify the fact that there's only but so many of them. We grow every day. There's only a few close-minded individuals in this world, although it seems like a lot. But when you look around this room and you look around the world, period, you definitely see more of us. So what we have to continue to do is continue to organize, continue to unionize. Whatever strategy we have, we can't switch gears. If we switch gears, then that gives them the idea that they have us back against the wall, so now we have to change our plan. Though the plan is to make them change theirs. And that is exactly what we plan to do. We have to continue to, I mean, this organizing thing has to go to such a level that they never thought that it would reach. Because right now, they think that they're in control. And they have all these big plans of what they're going to take away from us. I guess we're just supposed to sit here and let them take it?
No.
No.
Well, this room lets me know that that is not going to happen at all. They know. They want to act like they don't know. And Mr. Tillis want to sit in his cushy office and hide and run. But you can run, but you can't hide. You're going to have to face us. You're facing us right now, and you're not even here. But we're going to make you face us. So the plan is to stick to the plan. Don't let them think for one minute that we have to restrategize, because we're not. So let's just keep organizing, organizing like they've never seen them before in their lives. Too much work, too many, too much blood, too much sweat, too much tears have been put into these things that my ancestors, your ancestors, have fought and died for, and they think that they have the ability to treat us as if we're commodities. Your money can buy a lot of things, but your money cannot buy my dignity.
Thank you, Ayesha. Can you pass the mic, Terrence?
See, you don't want to fall there.
Yeah, it's inspiring. And anytime you sit beside someone that inspires you, it gives you hope. And what Trump and his associates want us to do is give up hope. And that's not something that we're going to do. My name's Terrence Deverig, I'm a former transit worker, and also with American, uh, Malcolmated Transit Union, that represent Duke and Raleigh and Wilmington. But we have close ties here, did a lot of work in Durham. And we fought for a lot of things in Durham. And I found through experiences that it feels better when you fight back. I said, it feels better when you fight back. And what we do as a union, we fight. We fight, because there's no other alternative. I came from a company that was privatized and used a lot of your face in privatization. And you have to fight every day. Classic situation, health situation with COVID. When I started trying to get protection for us as bus drivers, they wouldn't let us wear masks. They wouldn't let us do anything that would show up the company to show that we were, actually, we had wore masks as a protest before, so they tried to regulate us as wearing a mask. So one day, I was driving, and someone got on my bus that was tested positive for COVID. And I had to drive, evacuate my bus, drive directly to the office. And they wouldn't let me go in. They escorted me out, no instructions, no nothing. Here I am, driving home, trying to figure out how this is going to affect my family. They just sent me home, no direction, no nothing. Came into my house, this was on a Thursday, and I won the labor appointment by Sunday. Not only do we have protective masks, PTOs, rear door boarding, everything, not just for my location, but the entire train. That time that I spent isolated was hell on them. And we got to give hell to them and the Trump associates. That's how we do it, because wrong is wrong. And I feel that if we come together like this often, we can't lose.
That's right.
We can't lose. We're not going to lose. So whatever you need from the Attorney Labor Council, we will do our best. I have six individuals here. I will try to sign one for each and every one of them to support your particular issues. And if you can't show up and do something due to regulations or restrictions by your company, we will try to show up, because we have to embarrass them. That's what we're going to do.
Thank you, Terrence.
Yes, Charles Clark, the National AFL-CIO Southern Regional Director. One of the primary states that I support and represent is North Carolina. North Carolina was one of two battleground states that we had in the whole South. So most of our resources and attention really came to both North Carolina and Georgia. As I've listened to the testimony out there, moved, because I've been on leave the last couple of weeks, and then get a chance to go to the other hearings. And so I said to my director, I said, I got to be in Raleigh-Durham. And so to hear these testimonies is really inspiring, even though I understand to a large degree some of the issues that you're talking about. And so when I think about what is it that I can do to help lift and amplify the messages that have come forth, is one, use these testimonies and share them with my team members, so that we continue to support federated bodies like Mary B. and Duberry and other central labor councils. But we're not just in North Carolina. I think it's important to take your message beyond North Carolina, so that other states and other CLCs and state beds, bodies, understand what the magnitude of what's happening. So I host a Monday CLC meetings across the region. I can see us sharing these testimonies with them in whatever way that we can support federated bodies, Mary B. and others, with resources, with messages, anything we can do, we're going to be there. And then I can help do something that's really powerfully important, and that is get Tillis out of office. You got to understand that he didn't harm now with the billionaires, but it's the votes that put them there, and we have the power of the vote. Couple years ago, when Nissan was organizing, I went to Mississippi and sat down with James Meredith. James Meredith led a one-man strike, a one-man march from Memphis to Jackson, Mississippi. And he got shot on the way, and he was in the hospital, and he told us how Dr. King and Stogie Carmichael and all of them came to see him, and they decided that they were going to take up that march and take it on into Jackson, Mississippi. And he said that where it started as a one-man march, but by the time that one man energized thousands and hundreds of thousands, they had thousands of folks marching to Jackson. And he said that there was a chant that they had, that they would chant all the way into Jackson. Ain't no power like the power of the people, 'cause the power of the people don't stop. Ain't no power like the power of the people, 'cause the power of the people don't stop. And when you start thinking about, we got the power, they may think they have the money, but we got the power. And we not going to stop. We going to keep going, and I'm going to do all I can to ensure that that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. I want to say, Mr. Vargas, I think the plan that Doge expects is for all the laid-off government workers from the VA and from the EPA to fill the vacancies left by departed farm workers. But don't drink the water. Right? Don't drink the water. I believe one of the things that we need to recognize is for the billionaires, the 1%, it isn't just about making money, because there's plenty of money, they got plenty of money. It's about securing protection for themselves. So one of the basic, really the two basic instincts that drive humans are fear and greed. One of the fascinating things to me is that it seems like the richer a person becomes, the more fearful they become. So that's what's going on. And it also makes me ask the question, I wonder, what Senator Tillis has been promised when it all goes to hell in a handbasket? Because he's not a billionaire. Right? So where does he think he's going to be when all the billionaires huddle up to protect themselves from what's coming? We could ask him that question. The margin of victory in the election last November, based on the popular vote, was very, very small. I used to know that number off the top of my head, but it's been a while since I had to use it. But it's like point zero zero something. It's really, really small. And we need to cling to that fact, because in addition to the margin of victory being very, very small last November, the approval rating for the current president has dropped down to about the level of the hardcore MAGA. In other words, only people who still approve him are the people who are blindsided and don't, you know, they weren't getting a visit anymore. Right? So there's a lot of voter's remorse out there, I believe. And that's what we have to capitalize on. When we talk about sticking together, we got to remember that some of the people that actually voted for him might be willing to come and stand with us now. The numbers show that that is probably true. And then the last thing I'm going to say is that the North Carolina Council of Churches that I lead represents 19 denominations. That is a lot of churches. I can promise you, the denominational leaders of those 19 denominations are on our side. If there's any question about where we can find strength in numbers, Mary B. has my number, and I can help us find strength in numbers. If you need a place to meet, I can help you find a church fellowship hall. If you need a place to organize, I can make a phone call for you.
That's all right.
That is my promise to you. And my takeaway from here is that we will stand together, and we will fight back. I really tried hard not to use bad language, but Mr. Vargas, we can go out in the parking lot later and tell them.
Thank you, Alexandra. Great. I'm struggling a bit, to be honest. My name's Alexandra Serrada. I'm Executive Director at the North Carolina Budget and Tax Center. So we do a lot of research into an analysis of what works to build an economy that truly delivers well-being to every person, every community across our state. And I'm struggling, because I think, you know, for so much of my time doing this work, we've spent hours, weeks, months, years, looking at the numbers and trying to figure out a compelling story. And you all just gave a compelling story of what we know is the reality, that people, workers, fuel the economy, that the rich and billionaires are getting richer off of the wealth that our labor creates. And so it's just hard for me to think about what I can do in this moment to support what you have, the expertise and the power and the knowledge and the connections to move forward. And so my commitment is to center the stories that you told and the stories of workers across our state who are experiencing these layoffs, are experiencing program cuts, are experiencing bad working conditions that are not delivering the well-being we know our economy needs to. I think more than anything, alongside the numbers, the actual human experience is what we need to continue to emphasize. And so as we move forward to make the case that we don't want the $1.9 billion going to the top 1% in North Carolina, that's what the tax cuts that Senator Tillis is supporting will do. We don't want that. We want an investment in the well-being of every person, every community in our state. I'll be committed to working to find the places, both here in North Carolina with our state legislators, to make sure they're clear and make their position clear about where they stand on tax cuts for the rich and profitable corporations and investments instead in working families. And I will be available at any moment to support you in making the case for just how important the experiences and the contributions are that you've made to our communities and the future of our state and country.
And if Senator Tom Tillis were here, I'd give him an opportunity to see how he could respond to all these questions and the stories. Thank you, panelists, please give them a round of applause. As I mentioned earlier, we are going to compile all the testimony and the stories. The National AFL is pulling them all into a report that we are going to present to elected officials in Washington. We are going to send those postcards to Senator Tom Tillis. So if you did not get a chance to fill one of those out, please do so on the way out. Because Tom Tillis and our elected officials, they need to understand that this is not about partisan politics. This is about doing what's best for their constituents, what's best for you and me and our neighbors. It's about building an economy that works for all of us, ensuring the success of the next generation, and providing a strong ensuring the success of the next generation and providing a strong safety net for the most vulnerable among us. Folks, we have got to keep the pressure up on Senator Tillis and our other officials to stand up and do what's right for working people. So tonight, I'm asking you, I didn't pick up one of the flyers, we have flyers in the back. I'm asking you to take two actions. One, call Senator Tillis's office. Let's keep calling and calling and calling them and let our voices be heard. And I hope that each person here will make a call and I hope that you will say, "Count me in" to get at least two or three other folks to make those calls. So if you're willing to do that, let me hear you say, "Count me in."
Count me in.
Awesome. We still want folks who haven't told their story to tell your story. We'll have, the videographer will be here for a little while if you want to do that. There's also the flyer in the back that has the QR code that you can use to tell your story. We also want you to join the Department of People Who Work for a Living. So go to the website, join, so that you can get information and try and make sense of all the federal actions and legislation and learn about upcoming protests. There's gonna be a big May Day event in Raleigh on Thursday. There's also brochures back there. There's gonna be plenty of opportunities to take more action. So it, now is the time to tell your, your friends, your family, your neighbors that we all need to show up, stand up, and speak up. Because together is how we will win justice for federal workers and for all of us. As you heard, the panel lifted up, "We have the power and together we can make a difference." To end tonight, I'm gonna conclude with a spoken word that I wrote. Some of you know I bust a rhyme every now and then. And then afterwards, we wanna take a group photo with Senator Tillis and her signs. So Jeremy, we're just gonna get people to stand in place. We'll bring Tillis out into the audience and we're gonna take a photo from this angle. So I hope that folks will remain for the photo. So here is the poem. "We must fight back against this billionaire coup, this takeover by a very rich few. None of us elected Elon Musk, but there he is in the West Wing with a president who acts like a king. Billionaires focused on downsizing, demonizing, demoralizing, while the costs of food, gas, rent are rising and rising. And with this trade war, prepare to pay even more. Stocks are taking on Wall Street, more people can't make ends meet. Immigrants forced to flee what's supposed to be the land of the free. Services slashed for our veterans, our seniors, our communities as billionaire Musk wields a chainsaw with impunity. An attempt to strip federal workers of their union rights, all in the hope that would end our fight. But try as they might, we will not be silent. Working people stand united, defiant. Across the nation, we are taking to the street. And officials like Tillis can feel the heat, knowing next election, they can be beat. You see, the Department of People Who Work for a Living is just the beginning. We will educate and agitate. We will protest and we will not rest. Because we know that worker solidarity is how we win shared prosperity. Together is how we win. Together we will win. I say, "Together we win." You say, "Count me in." Together we win.
Count me in.
Together we win.
Count me in.
Together we win.
Count me in.
Thank you, everybody. Let's stand strong and stand together until there's justice for all of us. So grab a sign, stand up at your chair. We're gonna bring Senator Tillis in the middle and we're gonna take a group photo.